I got my gavel, I'm ready to go.
Oh, um, Madam Mayor, do you have a copy of? We're switching.
Mm-hmm.
Yes, we're ready. Quick.
I hereby call the City Council meeting for January fourteenth, six o'clock to order. If everybody could please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. Ready, begin. I pledge allegiance.
To the flag. And to the United States of America. And to the common.
One nation. Which stands. One, sorry.
One name under the flag. Indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Alrighty. Thank you very much. Linda, if we could get roll call, please.
Yes, ma'am. Councilmember Andrisik.
Here.
Councilmember King.
Here.
Councilmember Lewis.
Here.
Vice Mayor Sanchez.
Here.
And Mayor Sierra.
Here, very good, okay. Do we have any reordering of the agenda tonight?
No, ma'am, no reordering.
Alrighty, then we will go to our public comments. This is an opportunity for anybody who wishes to, to put in their two cents worth, up to three minutes, compliments, complaints, anything that they'd like to let council know about, or staff. I do have one public comment. I guess I should say, if anybody has a public comment, there still is time to get ahold of our city clerk, Linda Reed, at, what is it? The council, at cityofbuilton.com, if they want to write anything in. I'm going to go ahead and read our public comment from Dr. Randy Haggard, Superintendent of the Builton Union School District. Dear members of the City Council, Mayor Sierra, City Manager Wolf, and staff, the collaboration between the City of Builton and the Builton Union School District is a source of pride for the whole community. The provision of facilities for recreation, education, and special events through this partnership is exceptional in every respect. As we look to the future, it is our hope that we will continue to see this unified approach expand and enrich opportunities for residents of all ages in this wonderful little city. As you know, as you may know, we have experienced some challenges with facilities, and I want to publicly thank the entire City Council and city staff for your commitment to partner with the school district in sharing the cost of repairs. These are challenging times, and this is more helpful than you may know. We look forward to meeting soon as a joint-use task force with some new members. We are grateful for this unique partnership to benefit the community. With some new members. We are grateful for this unique partnership to benefit the community. Okay.
Louis, I think we can continue.
And wish you all the best in your endeavors this evening. Sincerely, Dr. Randy Haggard, Superintendent. Okay, just a fluke, huh?
Yeah, just the one. No, no others.
Okay, then I am closing public comment and moving on to the consent calendar. It's fairly short tonight. We have the minutes of December tenth, twenty twenty, regular City Council meeting, list of claims to be approved and ratified for payment to date for fiscal year twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one, and the monthly treasures report, November thirtieth, twenty twenty. Any questions for staff, or is there a motion?
Move for approval.
Uh, can I make a comment that it's a small typo, but in the minutes of December tenth, there is the semicolon between six and, I want to say, six eighteen, or something to that effect. In the first, whatever time it is, there is a semicolon missing. Not that it's a big deal, but it's in there.
Alrighty.
English class one oh one.
Right. I'm glad, I know.
I'm glad you're, I'm glad you're reading it. That's, that's wonderful.
Acceptance of the, of the faux pas.
Okay, so I believe Councilman King made a motion.
Frank, move for approval.
Second.
Vice Mayor Sanchez? Okay, Linda, go ahead. Roll call.
Hey, Councilmember King.
Hi.
Vice Mayor Sanchez.
Hi.
Councilmember Andrisik.
Hi.
Councilmember Lewis.
Hi.
And Mayor Sierra.
Hi, thank you very much. We do have one presentation tonight. It is a proclamation recognizing human trafficking awareness month. I'll read it. Linda, who, who are we giving this to in Long Poak afterwards?
Um, so it's Allison Wales, and I think she's on with us tonight.
She is.
Are you here? I've got two screens. Allison Wales is here. Alrighty, well, I appreciate you bringing this to our attention. We're very, very proud to make this presentation, and I'll just go through it. It's a proclamation recognizing human trafficking awareness month. Whereas, human trafficking is a form of modern slavery that occurs in every state, including California, wherein victims are forced to work in various forms of labor exploitation, including, but not limited to, commercial sex acts and other services that are induced through force, fraud, or coercion. And whereas, due to its isolated and discreet nature, many individuals across the globe are unaware that trafficking exists in their communities, and that more than forty million people around the world are victims of human trafficking. And whereas, human trafficking victims face a cruelty that has no place in a civilized world. It is a crime that can take many forms, and one that tears at our social fabric, debases our common humanity, and violates what we stand for as a country. And whereas, increased education about how to identify human trafficking, along with increased knowledge of interstate resources and services for those affected by criminal exploitation, can help decrease the number of future victims. And whereas, the Santa Barbara County Human Trafficking Task Force is committed to creating legal frameworks for investigating human trafficking and prosecuting those engaged in it. And whereas, the Santa Barbara County Human Trafficking Task Force has worked diligently to bring awareness to the fact that human trafficking occurs closer to home than one might think, and that California ranks number one in the country for reported human trafficking cases. And whereas, Human Trafficking Awareness Month is an opportunity to recognize the critical role all Builton residents play in preventing, reporting, and educating these heinous crimes. Now therefore, I, Mayor Holly Sierra, on behalf of the Builton City Council, do hereby recognize January twenty twenty-one as Human Trafficking Awareness Month in the City of Builton, and I call this observance to the attention of all of our citizens. Thank you very much, and Allison, do you have anything you wanted to add real quick? You got, you got the pulpit for a couple of minutes.
Just, just for a few minutes. Again, my name is Allison Wales. I'm the Associate Director at the North County Rape Crisis and Child Protection Center. We serve all of North County, and we are one of the original members of the Human Trafficking Task Force that began with the District Attorney Joyce Dudley way back in, way, way back in twenty thirteen. And since that little conference room time, we have grown a great deal with faith-based community, as well as with other county agency and nonprofits. What I like to point out is that it is something that people don't necessarily think they see, but you see it every day. And the, the victims in our county are local, those that have by, are local over seventy percent, I think, were from here, of the forty-eight percent of the girls are from here. It's not just something necessarily that goes down on the one oh one, but while that is a factor, it's not necessarily all the case. What I like to point out also, that's really the heartfelt thing, is that of the victims that have had legal interactions with law enforcement, thirty-seven percent of those people are seventeen and younger. And probably, our average age of working with victims start eleven, twelve, thirteen, fourteen, and can go to twelve, and the last time we had a success, I started with a girl when she was twelve, and she's now twenty-two, doing well, but it's been hard. Also, it's not necessarily in, in the hotels, we think it is. There's a lot of trafficking that happens via Uber to a home, to a local cul-de-sac, that people don't want to talk about, but it's actually very true. Also, of the investigations in the, and since we had, we've had a grant, and statistics, as you all know, is hard, but they've had, with the Sheriff's Department, they've had a hundred and seventy-two or six investigations in the last few years. And with that, and, and all of those that they interacted with, that's a small amount of cases. The Rape Crisis Center deals with clients, the Good Samaritan deals with clients that never have interaction at all with law enforcement. Or we've had people that will call up child welfare services because they've seen the red flags in their family, or school counselors. So my point is, we've done a lot of education since twenty thirteen, and we continue to do that to law enforcement, school districts, to teachers, to parents, because it's men and women, it's girls, and it is boys, we cannot forget our boys, they are trafficked as well all over the county. And also, to note, we're taking a lot more look now, a lot more look, at labor trafficking as well. That happens, and sometimes in the fields especially, we have like a dual role in our agency a lot, depending on the, the season, we have a lot of sexual assault and also trafficking, they kind of merit in, in, in that, and labor trafficking. So thank you for being, recognizing this, because there's a lot of people in the community, in the whole county, working on something that seems very silent, but it is there to take care of. And, and today I spent probably three hours trying to work with a fifteen-year-old who we've, trying to get her out of the life in a way. So, thank you, and if you ever have any chance to get any education, or say, hey, what is our Rotary Club or Lions Club, or whatever you're in, need a presentation, please give us a call and to help educate. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, and we're very proud to promote this issue, so, thank you.
Congratulations on your technology, doing good, doing good.
Thank you for coming.
Bye-bye.
Bye-bye. Okay, public hearings, we have none tonight?
We have none.
Alrighty, then we move on to councilmember comments slash items. We'll start with Councilman Lewis. Any items or comments you want to share tonight?
No, ma'am.
Alrighty, Councilman Andrisik?
None, none at this moment.
Okay, Councilman King? Councilman King? Any comments or items?
Sorry, I had it on mute. You think I'm going too far with the Santa Claus thing?
Stand on your head, let me see.
No, ma'am.
Alrighty, Vice Mayor Sanchez? Comments or items? Alrighty, I just, pardon?
We, we had an arts and culture meeting last week, and everything went fine, thank you.
Okay, alrighty. I just have, we were supposed to do a community cleanup February thirteenth, and due to the COVID surge, that has been canceled. And because of the surge, and the fact that we're still part of Los Angeles region, even though we've asked to be put into our own region, I'm just imploring our residents again to please wear masks, please socially distance, please let's get our businesses open again, let's get our numbers down so we can get back to promoting our town. So, that's my only comment. Written communications, none?
Yep, we have no written communications this evening.
Thank you. Committee reports, I guess I'll start to, Vice Mayor Sanchez, you said you had an arts and culture meeting?
Yeah, we just had a review and got to see some of the murals that are started, they're, you know, just in the works, but they're really nice. It's going to be a nice presentation when they get done, and I think.
Any idea when that will be?
No, just, it was kind of sketchy, the times that they had to get together with the, you know, not too close, and scheduling times between people for her to, and the artist, so it isn't like a free-for-all, like it would be, everybody had kind of asked to socially distance and things, so. But she's doing a good job with the, with it's there, and I'm not sure what the timeline exactly is on it.
Wonderful.
It's in the, it's in the works, it looks good.
And along good. Anybody else with a committee report? Councilman Andrisik, yeah.
Central Coast Water Authority met this morning. The biggest, the thing that we'll, we'll all be feeling fairly soon is the, the current allocation is ten percent. We'll have a ten percent allocation of our normal, normal use. They're expecting, he says, Ray Stokes, our general manager, it's looking like a critically dry water year. I tried to write exactly the way he said it. So, think twice before you put in something that uses a lot of water, because you might, might, might not have the availability the rest of the year.
Okay. Anybody else? Dave? Alicia, no? Okay.
No, ma'am.
Alrighty, thank you. Let's see, I had SB CAG. We were given a RENA report, and I see that Mr. Breslin is here from CAG to give counsel, just, it's in process, but he's giving us a breakdown of what RENA is going to be in the next, in the next phase. I was appointed Chair of CAG for the year, so that's kind of exciting for me.
Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Thank you. And Laughcomet today, and we met Mike Prater, who came to us from San Luis Obispo. He's our new Executive Director. Our Green Team met today, and we are, well, and Andrea can, can, we worked on a bunch of stuff today. We're coming back, the one that excites me, I think, the most is that we're trying to come up with an annual green award. We just haven't decided how, how to move forward with it, but something to work on, so.
Mayor Sierra?
Yes.
For those of us who are new, can you remind me what Santa Barbara CAG stands for?
Santa Barbara County Association of Governments.
Thank you.
Thank you, I apologize, we're so good, you know, when I got, first started on council, I, God, I couldn't understand a word, it was like a foreign language. And now I'm afraid I've become one of them, so, anyway.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
And APCD is the Airport Control District, so, yeah. Let's see, business items. Getting on with this discussion from Santa Barbara County Association of Governments, or SB CAG, regarding regional housing needs allocation, or RENA methodology. I'll turn it over to Andrea first.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, and members of the City Council. Tonight, this item, before you, staff will be providing information regarding an update on the regional housing needs allocation, or otherwise known as RENA, this process and methodology that the city, along with all other jurisdictions within Santa Barbara County, and throughout the state, have been working through over the past year or so. As Holly mentioned, also in attendance tonight is Brian Breslin, the Senior Transportation Planner with SB CAG, or Santa Barbara County Association of Governments. And at the conclusion of my staff report, Brian will give a brief, be giving a brief presentation on the RENA process and draft methodology that has been submitted to the California Housing Department of Housing and Community Development for Santa Barbara County. And Brian will also be available for any questions that the. And Brian will also be available for any questions uh, that the council may have related to the Rena processes, um, he's very involved. Um, obviously, um, in that process and it has a lot of uh, knowledge to that effect, so. Um, just by way of background, um, on August twenty-seventh of last year, staff presented a status update on the Rena process to the C- City Council. Um, and since, since that time, the process has continued to move forward and a draft methodology um, has been submitted again to the um, HCD or um, California Housing Department of um, Housing and Community Development.
Andrea?
Yes.
Andrea? Just to interrupt, uh, we do have a new council member who doesn't know what Rena is, could you just ex- just give her a really, why, what Rena is and why we're doing this?
Yeah, so actually, so um, actually I kind of touched on it a little bit later in my staff report, um, but yeah, I can um, yeah, I'll, I'll cover that for, for.
Thank you.
No, no problem. Uh, thank you for bringing that up. Um, so, um, basically the, by way of background, you know, the Rena process regional, which stands for again, regional housing needs allocation. This process occurs periodically um, as part of the housing element of the, of the general plan updates um, at the local level. Um, and so this process quantifies the need for housing by income group within each jurisdiction during a specific planning period. So, um, this upcoming Rena cycle, as they call them, which is, would be the sixth cycle um, planning period will be, will occur between February twenty twenty-three and February twenty thirty-one, so an eight-year planning cycle. Um, so the housing element update process um, follows uh, the same Rena um, cycle, so that next, the um, the next housing element update will follow that same timeline from twenty twenty-three to twenty thirty-one. Um, so, um, through consultation with SB CAG. Um, the HCD assigns the county a total number of housing units that must be adequately planned for during the specific planning period. And again, the jurisdictions within the county uh, through a working group are tasked with coming up with an appropriate methodology for assigning a total number of housing units to each jurisdiction. So back in December of last year, uh, the working group voted to recommend a preferred draft methodology to the Santa, the SB CAG Board of Directors with Carpinteria being the only no vote on that. Um, then later on in December, the um, of last year, the SB CAG Board voted to forward the recommended draft methodology to the State Department of Housing and Community Development for their sixty-day review, um, which is required by statute. Um, the HCD will be reviewing the draft methodology for compliance with meeting um, certain objectives. And I won't go through a lot of the details in my staff report, um, because Brian will be covering uh, many of those details um, in his presentation. So I will just note that it is, it is important to note that the city is uh, not required to ensure that these units that are assigned to the city are actually built. It's rather just that the city is required to ensure that there are adequate, what we call adequate sites uh, to accommodate the number of units that the city is um, ultimately allocated. So the city currently does have um, adequate zoning capacity to accommodate the draft allocation. That has, that, again, a draft allocation that has been assigned to built-in for the sixth Rena cycle. Um, and these units uh, could be accommodated uh, within the city um, through the um, Affordable Housing Overlay Zone. Um, or AHAZ, otherwise known as AHAZ sites. Um, through, in the form of accessory dwelling units, um, and also infill development sites that are currently zoned to allow for residential unit. So, again, as I mentioned earlier, the final uh, six-cycle Rena, Rena allocation will be incorporated into the twenty twenty-three um, housing element. Um, and also, as was mentioned earlier, um, in the staff report, um, HCD is currently conducting their uh, sixty-day review for that. Um, for the, for the Rena methodology for Santa Barbara County. Um, and just to give a little bit more detail, uh, once the review period with HCD is complete. Uh, the item will be brought back to the SB CAG Board for consideration for adoption of the final Rena methodology. Um, and then the local jurisdictions from there are then issued a draft allocation of Rena um, in, in a num- form, in the form of a number of units. Um, and then, you know, a- after they're given their draft, each jurisdiction is given their draft allocation, the jurisdictions um, may, if they so choose, file appeals on their respective draft allocations, um, and that uh, needs to occur within forty-five days of receipt of the draft allocation. Um, and then, you know, beyond that, um, if there are any appeals received, SB CAG would then conduct public hearings on any of the appeals. Um, and then, beyond that, once the pro- that process is complete, SB CAG would then issue final allocations um, to each of the jurisdictions. Um, and Brian will probably, will be touching more on the details of this and of the process overall, um, and um, will have likely a better idea on a, on a timeline, but this process will certainly be completed by um, the end of twenty twenty-one. So, um, with that, staff recommends that city council receive and file this, this update report um, regarding the sixth uh, cycle Rena methodology and allocation. Uh, that, that concludes my report, um, and I'm available for any questions you may have for me at this point. Um, however, Brian, again, is in attendance tonight and plans on providing some more details um, and background on the process and may be able to answer uh, some of the questions for you that you have, thank you.
Wonderful.
Um, and council members, and uh, thank you, uh, Andrea for that great uh, overview. Um, I'm Brian Breslin, SB CAG staff, and uh, I have a short PowerPoint. And um, I, I, I think Andrea has the hard copy of that if she wants to uh, have a few for later distribution or if you want to have that this evening, I think that should be available. But before I start, I just want to, uh, I'll share my screen and uh, we have a Rena landing page on our website. Uh, I guess some of you haven't, are, are new to the, to the council or really haven't been following this process, but there's a lot of background information, so. I'll just point to where that's available. And uh, let's see, share my screen here, where am I? Um, yeah, right here. So this is our Arena Landing Page and uh, as Andrea mentioned, uh, this process has been ongoing since uh, um, early last year. Uh, with um, our project development team, which was composed of the uh, planning directors in the county. And so we worked with them to develop uh, some options for a methodology and basically giving them background information on the whole Rena process. Uh, and then uh, we've been updating our board um, along the way. Um, as Mayor Sierra is probably familiar with, with some of the updates from uh, both our board and then our sub, uh, sub-county regional committees and um, and then we uh, took the uh, uh, scenario, allocation scenarios to the uh, our Technical Planning Advisory Committee and met with them a number of times to um, make a recommendation to our board. And then our board, as was mentioned, um, uh, approved the supplemental to HCD of the, of the methodology, so. At, at any rate, here's some of the, you know, the meetings we've had with the agendas and uh, uh, other material that was provided to the committees. I also want to point out the Arena Supplemental Report is which we, really what we started with. Uh, that provides uh, background information on the Rena uh, process and some of the uh, uh, methodologies that were used in the past and other regional agencies have used. And uh, how many units, for example, have been built by the various income levels, uh, the HD keeps track of that now, so that's uh, identified in this report as well. And then we look at some uh, metrics, uh, housing metrics, land use capacity, uh, job distribution, different ratios, household size, commuter, uh, commuting. And in, in different uh, uh, demographic characteristics that affect the housing market. So that's good, you know, background information for those that um, aren't too familiar with this process. And any members of public that might be listening to this, so this is available as well on our website, so I just wanted to point that out before um, I get started here. So, yeah, so now this is the uh, the PowerPoint, I hope you can all see that okay. Basically, this just summarizes the, the methodology, which uh, there we go, uh, which is a two-step methodology, and this is the result of our, our, our working group and our Technical Planning Advisory Committee input, uh, as well as SB CAG's uh, input as well, staff input. So basically, it's a two-step methodology, the first is we allocate uh, the housing need um, based on the proportion of existing jobs and forecasted households. Uh, sixty percent of the, the Rena allocation is based on existing jobs, forty percent is um, weighted uh, based on uh, forecasted jobs. So that basically distributes the the housing need to North and South uh, County. And uh, one of the advantages of this as well is that uh, there's other jobs that um, are not in jurisdictions. For example, UCSB jobs, jobs at the uh, Vandenberg Air Force Base and Santa Inez Reservation. And so in order to account for those jobs as well, um, those are added into the North County and the South Coast. Otherwise, if we did it just on a jurisdiction level, those jobs are not necessarily in those jurisdictions, so we wouldn't be accounting for those. And since we're trying to address the jobs-housing balance, um, that was kind of a critical uh, step, I think. And uh, this, the second step, uh, basically, uh, once you allocate to the regions, within those regions. Um, those, those job or those housing uh, need are allocated based on overcrowding and cost burden. Uh, with a fifty percent weighting on both, so overcrowding is uh, housing units that have over one person per room. And then cost burden are those households paying over thirty percent of their income in housing. So this shows the uh, the distribution of the uh, Rena need, housing need by uh, regions and um, so essentially this is based on jobs for the North County and the South Coast. So uh, the, the South Coast has a uh, a heavier weighting on the, the allocation, almost sixty percent versus the North County, so we're addressing the um, the jobs-housing imbalance, as, as in the South Coast, uh, has a lot more in commuters uh, that, that come to work in the South Coast. Uh, and we're addressing the need for more housing in the South Coast, so we can reduce the, the commuting. And um, as you can see, the Santa Inez Valley, um, the distribution is, is a lot less because there's uh, less of a jobs-housing imbalance and other factors we'll get into later. And this shows the effects of uh, the cost burden and overcrowding um, on the allocation of jurisdictions. Um, as you can see, Solvang and Gilton um, have a relatively low allocation relative to the other jurisdictions and uh, that, that's basically because there's less overcrowding and cost burden in the, in these jurisdictions. But uh, relative to Santa Barbara, of course, it's a bigger population, just more, uh, more households, but uh, there is more cost burden and overcrowding in Santa Barbara, also in Santa Maria. So um, those areas get uh, more of an allocation based on, on those factors. So this uh, figure just basically provides a metric to kind of assess how much of a allocation you have relative to housing, uh, existing housing units. The county-wide average is about nineteen percent. Um, some jurisdictions fall above that, you know, for example, City of Guadalupe and also uh, uh, South Coast cities of um, uh, Santa Barbara and then uh, Santa Maria as well. As you can see, Solvang and Gilton, um, as a proportion of the existing housing units, the allocation is relatively low. Again, um, the cost burden and overcrowding was less in those jurisdictions and they're just small cities uh, in general, so. Um, that's why the allocation is lower. Then we look at the distribution based on existing jobs. Um, the county-wide average is about thirteen percent, as you can see, the city of Guadalupe, uh, because the city of Guadalupe has a lot of overcrowding and cost burden. Um, their uh, allocation relative to existing jobs is, is high and there's uh, fewer jobs in Guadalupe as well, relatively relative to their population. Uh, again, um, Gilton, Solvang, um, relative to existing jobs, you got a, a lower allocation. So this figure basically is fairly hypothetical, assumes that uh, all those uh, units that are allocated are actually built. And it also accounts for future jobs based on our regional growth forecast, that forecast jobs and, and uh, uh, housing and uh, into the future twenty to twenty fifty. Uh, but this is just for the, the Rena planning period uh, twenty thirty. Uh, so for example, um, the county total uh, jobs-housing balance decreases and uh, the, the gray area is the six-cycle uh, result of the, the build-out of housing and, and uh, jobs. And existing is uh, is in the red uh, bar here, so we see a, a reduction in, in the uh, jobs-housing balance. Essentially about one point five uh, uh, jobs-housing balance is about what uh, is considered a, a, a good balance. So um, for example, the South Coast, uh, like, uh, as I mentioned, we're trying to uh, solve a jobs-housing balance issue in the South Coast, so, so you can see it drops fairly significantly uh, based on the housing uh, need that's allocated to the South Coast. The jurisdictions in the Santa Inez Valley, uh, not much change there because again, their allocation is, is much lower. Um, in Galita, uh, jurisdiction-wise, uh, uh, really uh, addresses the jobs-housing balance as well. And then the Santa Barbara, so these, these two jurisdictions are really affected, and also Santa Maria. Also, I thought it would be useful to look at uh, jobs-housing balance on a more regional basis, um, more like commute sheds. Uh, because it takes the city and the unincorporated area into consideration, both the jobs and the housing, so for example. We already discussed the South Coast and North County, but the Santa Maria Valley, um, uh, jobs-housing balance uh, is reduced, the Santa Inez Valley, it actually, they're about the same. Um, Long Poak Valley doesn't change much. Again, uh, the South Coast has the most significant change um, in the jobs-housing balance. So we also adjust the uh, allocation uh, by income group, I'll get into that uh, in more detail, why we do that, but uh, essentially, we look at the uh, the county-wide uh, average for uh, very low, low, moderate, above moderate uh, income households, so very low is zero to fifty percent of the median uh, uh, household income. Uh, low is fifty to eighty, uh, moderate is eighty to one twenty, and above moderate is over a hundred twenty percent. So that's compared with each jurisdiction and uh, the uh, the delta, the change between, uh, the difference between the, the county-wide average, each jurisdiction is multiplied by one point five. And then that is added to the existing, um, uh, is that added to the county-wide average. And that's uh, multiplied by the, the, the uh, the jurisdictions Rena allocation, so that uh, distributes the, the total need by uh, income level and um, we multiply it one point five to kind of uh, enhance that, and I will get into that more later, but uh, so we try to adjust those jurisdictions that have um, less very low and low proportions, uh, so they have a higher proportion. And those that already have a high proportion are, it's reduced, so they have a lower proportion, so that's essentially what we're trying to accomplish there. So this figure shows the income group allocation by percentage and uh, then you see some of the jurisdictions, uh, for example, Guadalupe received a, a small, smaller proportion, they, they have an existing high proportion of very low lows, so they're, they're allocated less. Uh, similarly, Long Poak as well. And those, so those are uh, allocated to the South Coast jurisdictions that have a, a lower proportion of very low lows. Uh, so that's showing the results of our, our methodology. And this just shows the values, uh, again, um, you know, jurisdictions like Santa Barbara receives a higher proportion and the numerical value is, is high. Um, also Galita proportionally and um, the unincorporated South Coast, whereas jurisdictions, uh, Guadalupe and, and other, other jurisdictions have much less. This figure essentially shows how that's uh, that proportion of uh, uh, income groups are adjusted and the ultimate effect, so the first uh, four column shows existing uh, variation from the county-wide mean. And uh, in the red are the ones that have the highest deviation, and then the second column shows the results after our adjustment, so you have less red. You know, less uh, jurisdictions that have a high deviation and uh, so ultimately, um, the one point five multiplier we're using is having a fairly uh, significant effect on the income group allocation. So I'll discuss a little bit about the statutory objectives that were required to uh, uh, address in our methodology. Uh, and some of them are a little repetitive, but uh, you know, so we use a methodology to try to address a couple of those uh, objections at the same time, which I'll mention. So uh, first of all, the uh, the first objective increase the housing supply um, and mix uh, by income level. And so as I mentioned, uh, each jurisdiction will receive the uh, allocation for low and very low and try to adjust accordingly. So they're equitable. So uh, like I mentioned before, we uh, provided larger shares uh, to jurisdictions that had the highest housing costs. And in the lowest uh, proportion of very low and low income. The second objective promote infill development. Efficient development patterns and achievement of the greenhouse gas reductions, which we're required to accommodate. So for example, the seventy seven percent of the regions determinations allocated in incorporated cities, uh, promoting infill development. And then it took uh, the methodology complements the regions uh, SB CAG Sustainable Community Strategy. So which is essentially allocates uh, more housing on the south coast to address jobs housing imbalance and to uh, ultimately reduce greenhouse gas uh, emissions.
Can I interrupt you for a second?
Yes.
Can you go back to that previous screen? Uh, one before that that had all the uh, uh, where was it? Yeah, there you go.
So this little key on the bottom shows the uh, the variation from the means. So the this darker green is the least amount of variation and then it increases uh, towards the red. So there's less red in this after the adjustment we did and there's more uh, more green.
I'm just gonna take a second here, sorry. Okay, go ahead. Sorry.
No problem. Okay, objective three, uh, improve uh, the uh, jobs housing balance and um, also try to match the uh, number of low wage jobs with uh, more housing that's affordable to low wage workers. So it's that's basically called a jobs housing fit. So we directly address the jobs housing balance um, by uh, the allocation, our methodology that uses the uh, allocation of uh, in the first step, more housing where the jobs are. And then a a south coast emphasis on a jobs housing balance. Uh, something called income parity, which uh, is basically those regions was a uh, those jurisdictions with a large proportion of very low, low. Um, should receive less and those with more uh, less should receive more. And then there's something called uh, 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 furthering and furthered fair housing. And so uh, that's basically um, where the uh, the state wants us to allocate more uh, very low and low housing to jurisdictions that have uh, that have high resource areas. So they have uh, more jobs and they have um, more expensive housing. And um, so we're trying to uh, address a couple of these objectives, um, just basically by uh, allocating the uh, a larger proportion of very low and low to those jurisdictions that have both income parity and uh, high resource areas and jobs housing fit. Those all happen to be the same uh, jurisdictions in the south coast and also San Onofre Valley. So objective four, uh, allocating a lower proportion of housing need to an uh, to an uh, income category jurisdiction, or it has a proportional proportionally high share of households in that income group compared to countywide average. Again, we we addressed this. So that was a major focus of the uh, income group allocation methodology. By using that one point five multiplier, we achieved the maximum possible adjustment within our single Rina cycle. There's only so many how housing units to allocate. So and only so many very low, low, we pretty much uh, max that out um, in our methodology. As I mentioned, affirmatively furthering fair housing, um, uh, seventy three percent of the regions combined very low and low are allocated jurisdictions with the highest resource areas, the south coast, San Onofre Valley and the in Arcane area. So the next steps, uh, as Andrea mentioned, our board authorized uh, HCD review the uh, the methodology sixty days. They they've been following this process all along. So we anticipate that'll take less than sixty days. And then um, the our advisory committee and board again will be engaged to uh, finalize the methodology and then also the determination, uh, which is uh, currently uh, at twenty nine thousand three hundred. So um, we're still in discussion with HCD and that uh, they may or may not reduce that. There's been a new census data release, so they're gonna ratchet that into the formulas. And um, we also have the option of using uh, comparable regions for the comparison with uh, the overcrowding and cost burden. And uh, at this point, they use the the national average. So we're discussions to do that. Uh, I can go over more of the the HCD numbers if if you want. I can pull up that spreadsheet, but essentially, you know, their their allocation to SB CAG was twenty nine thousand three hundred at this point, but um, that may change. And then there is an appeals process um, as necessary. So that's that's basically my presentation. Um, I can uh, respond to some questions if you may have them or or sometime down the down the road, you feel free to to call or send us an email. Um, and again, there is the uh, some background material again on our our arena website. Uh, for those of you that uh, are really unfamiliar with this process.
Thank you, Brian. I appreciate it. Uh, are there any questions? From council? No questions? Okay, uh, open it up to uh, public. Are there any questions? Anything from public, Linda?
No, no comments.
Righty. Thank you. Then I bring it back to council. This was information only, a discussion kind of wetting our our feet in the water to see what's coming our way. Uh, the state of California has housing needs. They break it down by county. They did a real jump this this cycle uh, because of the housing shortage in California and uh, I think I know Andrea was very involved in coming up helping with the formula uh, with SB CAG staff and uh, this is pretty much what it is. I've heard that the cities that have appealed so far, none of the appeals have uh, been accepted. Is that right, Brian?
Excuse me. Uh, they're still in the process. Um, the SCAG region, uh, which goes from Ventura County um, down to Orange County and also to uh, Riverside and Coachella Valley. Um, they've had fifty appeals. Um, they represent a lot of jurisdiction, but uh, that sounds like a big number. It it is, but uh, you know, they represent a lot of jurisdictions. So they're still going through that process and um, as well as Sandag. So um, the Secog region Sacramento uh, did not have any appeals. So um, we don't know where those are at this point. They're they're still in process, but um, the uh, other jurisdictions can weigh in on an appeal uh, from another jurisdiction and also HCD can. So I think it's it's a kind of an uphill battle to appeal, but jurisdictions are doing that. We'll see how it how it at the end resulted that.
Terrific. Well, I truly appreciate you coming, uh, spending some time tonight and explaining it to Buellton City Council.
My pleasure. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Brian.
Thank you very much.
For coming. Very good.
Alrighty, let's move on with the business item number six. Uh, we have the review of comprehensive annual financial report. That's a CAFR for the fiscal year that ended June thirtieth, twenty twenty. Uh, Chanel Zamora, take it away.
Madam Mayor, members of the city council, staff is pleased to present to you its comprehensive annual financial report, also known as the CAFR for the fiscal year beginning July first, two thousand nineteen through June thirtieth, twenty twenty. Um, the city is required to present a basic annual financial report, but the city has elected to prepare a CAFR to provide counsel to the community more about the city financial condition. Uh, since the city started preparing the CAFR, the staff has submitted the CAFR to the GFOA, which is the Government Finance Association and has won the award seven consecutive times. Uh, we have submitted the CAFR for consideration for the award again this year. Um, the CAFR is divided into three separate sections, the introduction, financial and statistical. The introduction provides background information about the city. The financial uh, includes the management discussion and analysis, also known as the M D N A. Basic financial statements and the fun financial statements along with notes to the financial statements and includes independent auditor report. The statistical uh, portion presents up to ten years of unaudited statistical cities financial trends in order to gain of whether the city's financial health has been improving or declining over time. The financial statements are prepared based on generally accepted accounting principles, otherwise known as GAAP. As issued by the governmental accounting standards board or GASP. Moss, Levy and Hartzheim have performed an audit of the financial statements for fiscal year two thousand nineteen twenty. The auditors have expressed an opinion that the city's financial statements for fiscal year two thousand nineteen twenty are fairly stated with GAAP. As part of the audit, our auditors also perform tests of the city's internal accounting control procedures. Um, staff recommends that the city council review and file the CAFR for the year ending June thirtieth, twenty twenty. I am now open for questions that the city council may have in our auditor. Our Adam Geis is also here. If the city council has any questions.
Thank you very much, Chanel.
You're welcome.
First of all, any any questions for Chanel or Mr. Geis? Councilman Andrisic, did you have one?
No, ma'am. I've just said.
Got it. I just heard the ma'am.
Yeah, I had a quick question. Sorry about the video, but baby's not cooperating. Um, in the school district financial reports, there's a section that talks about audit exceptions and audit findings. And when I was reading your audit, I don't know if it's omitted because it's not the same terminology or not how you guys prepare your reports or if they're omitted, if there are none. So I just wanted to ask how that works.
Sure. Uh, can you guys hear me?
Yes.
Yes.
Yeah, that's a that's a great question. Um, so yeah, with a city, the report structured a little bit different. School districts are required to report findings in their actual uh, audit report. Um, for a city, if there was any findings, it would be in a supplemental letter to uh, to the council. Um, but I am uh, pleased to say that we were able to complete all of our uh, testing of controls over this last year. Um, and we we have no findings to report.
Wonderful.
Awesome. Thank you so much for the explanation.
Nothing else, Alicia?
No, ma'am. That'll do it.
Alrighty, Councilman King?
Sorry, I was on mute. No, no, ma'am.
Okay, and Vice Mayor Sanchez, any questions?
No, it looks good. Very comprehensive.
Very, yeah, very comprehensive. Uh, if there are no questions from council, I'll open it up to the public. Do we have anybody? Online, Linda?
No, ma'am.
Alrighty, and I bring it back to council. Uh, this is uh, that we review and file. Uh, do we need a motion on this one, Greg or just?
Yes, I'd like you to do a motion to receive and file this one just because it's a financial report.
I I do have, I do have to say before we get to the motion, I'll let you, I'll let you take it then, Dave. Every year I get to sit down and with Moss, Levy, Hartzheim, I believe I sat down with Mr. Geis this year. And uh, they always ask if I have any concerns. They go over what any findings are. I just, I've always been so impressed with the thoroughness uh, of both our accounting, our auditing firm, uh, but also our finance department, just incredibly uh, professional and very well done on both ends. So with that, Dave, I turn it over to you.
Uh, yes, ma'am. I move to approve the uh, review of the comprehensive financial report, C A F R for the fiscal year ending in June thirtieth, two thousand twenty.
Okay, Vice Mayor Sanchez, was that you or Ed?
That was Ed.
Uh, Councilman Andrisic made the second. Linda?
Okay, Councilmember King.
Aye.
Councilmember Andrisic.
Aye.
Councilmember Lewis.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Sanchez.
Aye.
And Mayor Azera.
Aye. Thank you very, very much. Uh, it's uh, it's it's nice to to belong to a city that that runs its numbers well.
Thank you still. Good job.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Uh, yeah, I'd like to thank, I'd like to thank you, Chanel. It was very comprehensive and unfortunately, with what's going on right now, we got a lot of ups and downs, but you know, we're still looking in pretty good shape.
All things considered.
That's right.
Thank you. Alrighty, and moving to our final business item tonight, resolution number twenty one dash zero one. A resolution of the city council of the city of Buellton, California, directing and authorizing the street name change of Damasa Road to Rufus Drive. Mr. Wolf?
Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of the city council. As you'll recall, back in December, uh, the city council meeting, uh, the council directed staff to contact Dr. uh, James Buell uh, and to inquire as to a name that he might suggest or prefer uh, when considering the renaming of uh, Damasa Road. Uh, I managed to contact Dr. Buell and in discussions uh, with him, he suggested uh, the name Rufus Drive. Uh, Rufus uh, being a historical reference uh, from the Buell family, the original land, the original Buell landowner. Back in the nineteenth century was Rufus T. Buell, uh, considered to be the founder of the of the town here. Rufus is also the middle name of Dr. Buell as well as a number of his relatives, I'm I come to understand. Uh, as such, staff has returned to the city council with a resolution to change the name of Damasa Road to Rufus Drive. However, I will note that uh, despite the fact that the the draft resolution uh, includes the name Rufus Drive, the city council is free to choose um, another name should you so desire. Uh, if you decide to do that, we'll simply reprint the resolution for the mayor's signature uh, following the city council's uh, direction. Um, so with that, I'll conclude my report. I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
Alrighty, any questions for the city manager? Questions? Okay. Sure, Vice Mayor Sanchez?
Did Dr. Buell, um, did you propose a prop possibility of a Rufus Buell Drive? Think Rufus is something that nobody will know what it is, but it's like, I think we should include the, like, I like the Buell and I like and if he likes Rufus, I wonder if we could make it Rufus Buell. So it would just a thought.
Sure. I I did originally suggest to him the 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 name um, Buell Drive or Buell Way and asked him, uh, I I did that in the form of a voicemail message that I left him in my first attempt to contact him. He did call me back a couple of days later uh, with the suggestion um, of of Rufus Drive. Um, he felt it, you know, it 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 was um, a a significant historical reference to the city. I I do take your um, uh, your meaning that that the name of Rufus Buell Drive might be a little bit more um, understandable to a lot of folks who who aren't familiar with the city's history, might bring a little more of that history. understandable to a lot of folks who who aren't familiar with the city's history, might bring a little more of that history to light. That's that's certainly a decision the city council could make.
Thank you.
I agree with you, John. I think that it's more historical and more people will understand the meaning behind it. So I would definitely support adding Buell to that.
Okay, any more questions and then I'll go to the public? No questions? Linda, anybody from the public out there with the input on the name of the street?
No ma'am.
Thank you. Okay, back for discussion then. Yes.
Madam Mayor, Lieutenant Green may have a comment regarding the that that proposed street name. We we did not have an opportunity to discuss alternatives with the sheriff's department. So if he has any comments, he may want to let us know right now.
Good evening, Madam Mayor and council. I I just thought I'd point out, and Councilman King may understand as well. Sometimes if we make long street names or hyphen street names, it can be a little bit of a logistical nightmare. And those reports in the digital age. I just thought I would mention that so that maybe we, as you guys are making a decision, you might keep that in mind that we do work within parameters inside the reports during digital time. When I first started, handwriting was not a problem, but with the digital age, you can make a mess.
Yeah, remember when you had to write everything by hand?
Yeah, that was in the beginning of my career, sir.
Yeah, exactly right. Mine too. Twenty-five pages handwritten. Madam Mayor?
Yes, sir.
I I'm still good on Buell Street. I mean, it it sounds good. It's 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 easy. It it represents the entire Buell family rather than just one family member because there's more than one that have been an influence in this community. I I'm sure that Dr. Buell would be happy if we called that Buell Street. And for ease of change, because we changed the name of this road, every mapmaker, every GPS guidelines, everything, they're all going to have to change this when they do updates on this. So I'm I'm still, it it sounds good. People will understand it, and I'm still good with that Buell Street.
And we were the ones that said, please talk to Dr. Buell and see what he'd like.
Well, you know, I don't think you could be in a happy, if you can name the road King Street, I think I'd be happy with that too, regardless of what my thought was.
Well, Dave?
Madam Mayor?
Dave, yes, yes, Councilman Andrisik.
Is is Drive off the table? I like the, I I think Drive is pretty descriptive of what's going to happen with that real estate. We're going to drive on it. Instead of we're going to road on it.
Yeah, no, the, I think the Drive part is, I think the Drive part is easy. It's the Rufus and the Buell. That's, I guess, a tougher decision. I was in favor of Buell, but then when we went to Dr. Buell and he said he preferred it was called Rufus, it's it's, you know, if if that's, we live in Buellton, so if I'd, I don't think it's going to make that big of a difference. It's a crossover, the highway. So I would be more inclined to just go with whatever Dr. Buell would like it named. But I, this is a discussion, and then there's a motion and a vote, and that's the way our council runs.
A little more input on those reports that I referenced. If you do it the way you were just saying, Madam Mayor, it would, it would actually print out Rufus D.R. Buellton altogether. So it would almost look like Rufus D.R. Buell. Is how they.
Like a Dr. Buell, huh?
Yeah.
Anyway, I I just thought I would point that out. Obviously, I don't, I'm not asking you to make decisions based on our ease, other than when you do street changes like that and you make it a longer street, it does have some logistical problems behind it, both with dispatch and in report writing. I mean, we we will get over it, not a problem, but I wanted to throw that out there a little bit.
Thank you very much.
Madam Mayor?
Yes, sir.
We could also go with Rufus T. Buell Street. I mean, damn, the torpedo's in full speed ahead, you know, Rufus T. Buell Street. And there, there you go. There's a guy that was influential in this town. Dr. Buell's great grandfather or grandfather, great grandfather, right? Rufus T. Buell Street.
Sounds good to me.
I mean, there you go. There's the guy that basically founded the town, Rufus T. Buell.
Vice Mayor Sanchez, you are an acquaintance of Dr. Buell's. Your thoughts?
I I'm not really that close to him at all. I just know of of him. But I I think that it would be too long if you put a T in it. So you make Lieutenant Green.
Oh, come on. The deputies can at least write the T in there. Rufus T. Buell Street. It even sounds cool. It's like an old cowboy movie. Rufus T. Buell Street.
I I think on the radio, they would probably make an effort to pull over more cars just so they could say that.
Yeah, I'm on Rufus T. Buell Street.
I think it drives, I like Drive better than Street just because it makes it sound more prominent, you know, that for the, if it's going to have a title and a name, I think some, the Drive sounds.
How about Rufus?
Come on, John, it's a total cowboy.
Rufus T. Buell Drive. It's like a cattle drive, Dave.
Yeah.
I think it's like John's book. When people find out they can be historic, it'll be a, it'll be a badge of badge of honor to have a ticket written in Rufus T.
Rufus T. Buell Street. I got a, I got a ticket on the overcross.
Yeah, here it is. We can have them laminated.
Exactly. You know what, you can, you can, you can sell, you can sell the signs at P. Sue Anderson's Rufus T. Buell Street.
They've sold everything else.
That's right.
So Lieutenant Green, if we went with the Rufus T. Buell, street or road or drive or whatever, the officers would be able to, I realize it's, it takes longer to type in and though I, you probably don't get too many tickets on that road anyway.
No, I I was more or less thinking of possibility of the future. But yeah, we can write whatever. I mean, I mean, we have what Caesar Chavez Boulevard. We have, I mean, all sorts of big long names in Santa Barbara. My only reference is it can, it it can be a little bit of a of a little problem with digitized reports. We can type whatever you guys decide. That's not a problem.
Come on, it adds a cool, it adds a cool factor. Come on.
Yeah, I can, I can see your motor cop spending a little more time down in there.
Hey, 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 there's no coffee shop on that road.
No donuts.
Would, would it be, getting, getting back to Lieutenant Green, DR would be accepted on the on the sign rated? The the printing on the signs, DR would be it? Is that, or is that the preferred or more likely than anything else?
I think, I think we should just do it.
Madam Mayor, if I can just make a comment, the the reason that that Drive was and and that Way and Drive have been suggested, the city doesn't have a formal street naming protocol, and we we have discussed this with the city engineer. However, in in many, if not most cities, certainly the ones that do have a street naming protocol, the the designations of of larger collector streets, the larger ones will be avenues and boulevards. And then the the next size down, your collector streets will be roads and streets. And then your connectors, the ones that don't, that that don't go very far are your Ways and your Drives typically.
Right.
And this would, this was a, an acknowledgement that this isn't a major street within the city. It's simply a connector between Avenue of Flags and McMurray. Clearly, we don't have a protocol and the city council can go whichever way you like with it. That was simply staff's intention at the beginning. Actually, the the term Drive was selected by Dr. Buell, so.
And I think it follows suit with how other cities, I mean, I understand you guys don't, but other cities generally have those rules that you just mentioned, and Drive would be more applicable.
I like Drive. I think it sounds more dignified.
I do too.
Me too. I would make a motion.
Okay. Vice Mayor, you've got a motion. It's just discussion is, well, we can discuss afterwards, but go ahead, Vice Mayor.
I'll concede, John. Rufus T. Buell Drive.
You gotta check with Lieutenant Green on the T. Yeah, Rufus Buell Drive or Rufus T. Buell Drive, I think would be a nice.
Come on, it's classic cowboy, John. Come on.
Yes, sir. Yahoo. You get to go the rodeo.
Rufus T. Buell Drive. I'll go with that.
Make that a motion.
All right, I move that we change Damasa Road to Rufus T. Buell Drive.
Is that a second then, Councilman King?
No, I I'm making, John conceded to me. I'm 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 making a motion.
Okay.
I second it.
Okay.
You know, we've spent more time on this than the CAFR or the Rena.
Madam Mayor, let 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 me get the motion official just so we don't have to bring the resolution back. So to approve resolution 21-01 with a change to the title, the fourth whereas clause, and section one, replacing Rufus Drive with Rufus T. Buell Drive.
Yes.
As Greg said, as Greg said.
We're going to go.
I will make that motion as Greg stated.
Thanks, sir.
And did we have a second on that?
I'll second it if, but I thought John seconded it.
I got it.
That's why we're going to second it, yeah.
Okay, Councilmember King?
Aye.
Councilmember Andrisik?
Aye.
Councilmember Lewis?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Sanchez?
Aye.
And Mayor Sierra?
Aye, thank you very much. Lieutenant Green, thank you very much for your input. I truly do appreciate you being here tonight.
Thank you. Sorry about the extra T.
Yeah.
Yeah.
It's fine.
Come on, come on, it's so cowboy, come on.
Just leave it out when you do your reports. We'll get it with Rufus Buell Drive. You'll be fine.
Uh, thank you very much. City manager's report.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of the city council. I'd like to start my report this evening with just a simple announcement and wishing our planning director a happy birthday, which I understand is today.
Thank you very much. Happy birthday.
Happy birthday Andrea.
All right, I'll follow that with another happy day. Monday, this coming Monday is a holiday and city, city hall will be closed. Just for 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 your information and the public's information. Next Friday, January 21st, there will be a league division meeting. And it's the first division meeting that the that the league has had for the Central Coast Division, or excuse me, Channel Cities Division in about a year. This will be virtual, as all of them are anymore. And if you would like to attend, I believe it's at three o'clock. If you would like to attend, please let the city clerk or I know, preferably by tomorrow, so we can RSVP for you for that meeting and get you a link to attend. I'm planning to attend the meeting. But if any of you would like to, please let me know. And then lastly, on the subject of.
You got two hands, Scott.
Okay, Councilmember Andrisik and Mayor Sierra, all right?
See.
I'm sorry?
See, yes.
Okay, great. I will.
Multinational.
Get an RSVP, and I will get the links to you both.
Thank you.
Um.
Thank you.
Lastly, on, as the, as the council is aware, we're looking at a situation here where vaccine distribution is coming into play. For the past several weeks, there have been vaccine distribution efforts geared toward healthcare professionals and seniors living in cardiac care facilities. However, those those categories are starting to be broadened by the state and the county in its efforts are following suit. I would just like to point out that staff is working with the county to try and aid the county in whatever way we can in the distribution of those vaccines. You might ask how we're planning to aid them, and at this point, I don't have a firm answer on that, simply because we don't know what the county's plan is going to be yet for distribution beyond those very narrow categories we're looking at right now. But we are looking at the possibility of hosting vaccination events specifically for our two senior mobile home parks within the city. I have been in contact with both the Ranch Club Mobile Home Park management, as well as our Buellton Senior Center, and both of those facilities are available for for a vaccine clinic or vaccine distribution event, should we be able to work that out with the county. Staff is also looking at options by which we may be able to transport people in need of transportation to whatever vaccine center is available and get those vaccinations taken care of. So staff will continue to work with the county to firm up plans to make sure that we get as many of our residents vaccinated as quickly as possible as soon as those vaccines come available. I'm happy to answer any questions with the limited information I have on that right now, but and with that, I'll conclude my report.
Any questions? Alrighty.
Just a comment, I appreciate you doing, I think it's important to get the seniors first to give them their, you know, get them their freedom and get out. A lot of the seniors are afraid to leave their homes these days, and to get them a little freedom would be nice.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, Madam, Madam Mayor, Mayor Sierra. Put me on that task here earlier this week and and we are, we are neck deep in it right now, so.
You're doing, I I truly appreciate it too. I, you know, we're, we're a small town, fifty, five hundred strong, and if we can get ourselves organized, it'll be a lot smoother than some of these other communities, what they're going through. So I I appreciate that you're working on it.
Thank you, Scott.
Thank you.
Thank you. Alrighty, if there's nothing else, then I am hereby adjourning our meeting at 7:17 break. And we'll see everybody back Thursday, January 28th, 2021 at six o'clock. Thank you very much. Have a nice weekend.
Good night, everyone.